Call to order, the regular meeting of the Annapolis City Council on Monday, April 9th, 2018 will be called to order at 7:05 because we had some technical difficulties here. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the invocation given by Alderman Savage.
Thank you. So may we become at all times, both now and forever, a protector for those without protection, a guide for those who have lost their way, a ship for those with oceans to cross, a bridge for those with rivers to cross, a sanctuary for those in danger, a lamp for those without light, a place of refuge for those who lack shelter, and a servant to all in need.
Is Holy Faith and Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge is allegiance to the United States of America, a free and equal republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Here.
Alderman Tierney.
Here.
Alderman Peown.
Here.
Alderman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Here.
Alderman Henson.
Here.
Alderman Savage.
Present.
Alderman Arnett.
Here.
Mr. City Attorney, please project the next item on the agenda.
The first item on the agenda is the State of the City Address presented by Mayor Buckley.
First of all, I'd like to thank my beautiful wife for being here for my first State of the City thing. Thank you, darling, I wouldn't be here without you. I see you couldn't drag the kids. I want to also thank my senior team who have helped me put this together. You guys are doing an amazing job and thank you for having my back. We, City Council and I as mayor, want to thank the public for trusting in us to be your leaders. So, on this 121st day of my term as mayor, I'm pleased to be able to report on the city, the state of our city. Together with our four new and our four returning City Council members, we have accomplished a great deal in four months. But I would like to make it very clear, much of what I'm about to say in this speech was achieved not because of us, as we were sworn into office only four months ago, but because of our City Department leaders and re-elected Council members, who have been working hard for years to meet goals, establish new goals, and keep improving the delivery of excellent services to the citizens of Annapolis. First and foremost, I want my administration to bring a new sense of compassion to our city. It has been important for our administration to set the tone with the theme of One Annapolis. The long-time tale of two cities within Annapolis ends with me. We need to move forward as a city to make progress together, to end the us versus them mentality. We all live in this city together. I would like to take a moment to introduce someone very special in our community. She was supposed to be here tonight, but we just heard that she isn't feeling well, but her niece Denise is with us. I would like to tell the story about Ms. Margaret Allen of Eastport, and how her story is the epitome of our One Annapolis theme. Ms. Allen has lived in Eastport for all of her 87 years in a home that her father built. She loves her home. She also loves her church where she worships alongside people like Alderman Sheila Finlayson. Alderman Finlayson heard that Ms. Allen had a problem in her home. She didn't have any heat or hot water for more than two years, and unfortunately, we are having, we are, you know, having a brutally cold winter. After a call to Annapolis Fire Chief David Stokes and the Office of Emergency Management Director Kevin Simmons, the city sprung into action to help Ms. Allen. Chief Stokes and Deputy Chief Simmons made a well visit to Mrs. Allen. They assessed her residence, installed ADA compliance smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, and started spreading the word about her need for a heating system. Susan O'Brien from my office called her plumber, Mike Farrow. Mike Farrow fixed her hot water heater in minutes at no charge, but found the boiler was the bigger issue. Vic Pascoe, the leader of the Eastport Civic Association, heard about this situation and set up a GoFundMe account. Within days, Vic helped raise more than $6,000 from our community to bring heat to Mrs. Allen's home. These efforts were nothing short of a Christmas miracle. I would like to introduce Ms. Allen's niece Denise Johnson, if you could please stand, Mike Farrow, Vic Pascoe, Susan O'Brien, as well as Police Chief Stokes and Deputy Chief Simmons, Mary Kate Hudson of the City Emergency Management Team. Let's have a round of applause. Thank you to everyone for an amazing team effort. This is what I'm talking about when I say we live in a compassionate city. Our Fire Department and Emergency Management Teams weren't the only employers going above and beyond the call of duty during this never-ending winter. I'd like to share the story of Ms. Mary Ann Holmes. Ms. Holmes called the city in January with a major water issue. Within 60 minutes of her call, Department of Public Works employee Joseph Hannah was at her door and took the time to listen, acknowledge, and offer solutions to Ms. Holmes' problems. Within one day, Joe and his team solved the problem. A member of his team, Mr. Asbury Parker, helped identify the solution. But there's more. Mrs. Holmes also told us that a few days later on Sunday night, a neighbor had a similar problem. Her neighbor was dismayed and doubted that anything would happen and thought it would take weeks for the city to respond. Within a few hours, the same team was on the scene and fixed her problem too. Mrs. Holmes, Ms. Parker, Mr. Hannah, would you please stand and show everyone what it means when I say Annapolis is a city of compassion? And by the way, Asbury, I've heard that these stories are just two of many accolades that you receive over the years for your outstanding work. This city is very grateful for exceptional employees like you. And while we're talking about water and ice, I must share this amazing story of brotherhood in our city and county fire departments. Two years ago, Annapolis Fire Lieutenant Josh Snyder was diagnosed with leukemia and started his battle against cancer. A bone marrow transplant in October led to complications for Josh, and he has been off work for eight months. But he has only used 24 hours of leave because his fellow firefighters have helped cover his shifts. Last weekend, firefighters from both Annapolis and Anarundale County played in a benefit ice hockey game, a game which we won, and a game that helped raise $6,000 for Josh and his family. Josh, who's not here tonight, but Josh, I know you, how beloved you are by your fellow firefighters, but I would like to thank you personally for your service to the city of Annapolis, and we all wish you Godspeed in your recovery. We need you back protecting our city as soon as you can. I'd also like to thank Chris Jude, President of our local Professional Firefighters Union, for his outstanding work pulling together this fantastic hockey game, and good job beating DC Fire Department. Amazing things are happening all around Annapolis. Our Recreation and Parks Department, Pitt Moyer Rec Center, has seen an increase in revenue during the first few months of 2018, but also, more importantly, our youth basketball league had its biggest in-house league yet, with more than 500 kids ages 5 to 14 participating this winter in more than 160 games. And even greater news, starting this month, our youth baseball league, four leagues of 23 teams, are playing for free. Because of the outstanding work of Parks and Rec employees, coaches, and volunteers who secured sponsorship from our local businesses, not one parent has to pay out of pocket. This is so important. This also keeps our kids active, healthy, and engaged. And more Pitt Moyer Rec Center news, I would like to thank Recreation Parks Director Archie Trader and his staff for their outstanding work with Emergency Management Director Kevin Simmons, Department of Transportation Director Rick Gordon, and Brian Callahan from my office. Please stand for helping the lighthouse shelter during its time of crisis when we had an emergency Your team made it possible for 50 citizens to safely evacuate in the early morning hours of March 3rd at 1:30 a.m., to be exact. The Stanton Center moved people to the Stanton Center and then eventually moved people to the Pitt Moyer Rec Center while the lighthouse shelter was repaired and reopened a few days later. And speaking of the Stanton Center, as you know, and I've already said, this winter has been brutal. For the past five years, the Stanton Center Winter Relief Program has helped provide shelter during the winter season for our fellow residents who are homeless. Even though the Stanton Center is a shelter of last resort, we activated the shelter more than 60 times and have helped nearly 900 patrons. Kevin Simmons, Office of Emergency Management, and Larry Griffins of the Stanton Center, we Care and Friends, thank you for your outstanding work with our city's shelter program. When the weather gods finally shine some sun and warmth on our city, you may notice that our city dock redecking is nearly complete. This project received 60% of its funding from the state's Waterway Improvement Fund. With warmer weather around the corner, we will unveil a plan created in partnership with Maryland Department of Natural Resources to design and engineer and install an accessible floating dock at Tucker Street on Weems Creek. This project will help connect our natural resources to people with disabilities. Also, I'm happy to report that our Harbor Master revenue is up more than 11%, or more than $100,000, and I expect with continued improvement to docking space and the excellent work of Harbor Master Beth Bayless, our team will continue to see revenue increases. Now I know how Marco Rubio felt. In related water news, the City Department of Public Works' new water treatment plant is fully operational and the old plant has been decommissioned. The water main on Chesapeake Avenue has been replaced, and the sewer main on Charlie Street has been replaced. And perhaps the most exciting news is related to our escalating nuisance flooding situation at City Dock. Thanks in part to the continued support of Governor Hogan and his inclusion of $750,000 in his budget for our flood mitigation project, as well as the continued support of Speaker Mike Bush and our Anarundale County delegation, we have secured an additional $1.25 million for a total of $2 million from the state for this important project. This is in addition to $3 million in federal funds requested through the Office of Emergency Management. Without this funding, we would not be able to begin the first phase of the project in November. DPW crews have also been busy with other projects. The sidewalks and curbs on Cornell Street have been replaced, a backup generator for City Hall was installed, our solar energy park at the closed City landfill will be completed in early summer. The construction of a bi-water park is complete, and approximately three miles of city streets were repaved. Transportation is incredibly important to this administration. Rolling along these three miles of newly paved streets, as well as numerous other city streets, are city transit buses with newly installed electronic fareboxes. Our transit fleet will also be adding three new small transit buses soon, and we have applied for a grant funding to add an additional three buses in FY19. Thank you to our Department of Transportation employees led by Rick Gordon for their continued outstanding service to help connect our communities and our families to each other and to their And thank you for adding stops at Harbor Center and the Social Security Administration to better serve our community. We cannot protect our physical environment or our social environment without investing in transit systems. Our staff in planning and zoning has also been hustling. In the coming months, we will complete the Cultural Resource Hazard Mitigation Plan and introduce it to the City Council. This is a one-of-a-kind plan in the country and helps build a plan for resiliency for the city of Annapolis. We will complete our work on the Forest Drive-Eastport Sector Study and draft results and recommendations to address issues affecting the quality of life in these communities, including traffic, land use, and environmental issues, will be presented. The Permit Office has been working with property owners to issue permits that are energizing redevelopment of several properties, including the old PNC Bank at the top of Main Street, the former MAF building on Forest Drive, and the office building on Gidding Street in Westonapolis. The former Butterworth Building located on Washington and Clay Street in the Annapolis Arts District will be transformed by the Bowman Community Development Corporation and will provide affordable housing for veterans, artists, and others, as well as offering renovated commercial space to help create entrepreneurship opportunities for the Clay Thank you, Theresa Wellman, for your hard work on this project. Planning and zoning, anyone falling asleep yet? Planning and zoning has also assisted the property owners of the Harbor Square Mall with a Historic Preservation Commission process for approving a mural at Dock Street. This project will jumpstart the repurposing of that retail space into an arts cooperative called The Cannery. The Cannery will not only be a place that showcases local artists, but also serves as an incubator for thriving arts, tech, and startup community. The building also will be maximized for the benefit of the entire city, creating jobs and teaching young entrepreneurs about social enterprise. And since it's a City Council meeting, I cannot break of years of tradition and not talk about the market house, which I have nothing to do with. To our City Council members and also Planning and Zoning Director Pete Gutwold and his team, because of you and your hard work, this spring we will finally unveil a new reimagined market house that will once again be the heart of our historic city. From one hot topic development project to another, the Eastport Landing Project, I would like to thank the property owners, the leaders of the Eastport Civic Association, and the city for working together to successfully complete an unprecedented three-day mediation. You worked through the issues that were important to residents and helped resolve those issues and comply with zoning laws. The Office of Law has also been working diligently with our Human Resources Department and our police and fire unions to negotiate in good faith a multi-year contract that hopefully will allow our outstanding public safety employees to continue providing excellent service to our residents while also creating predictable budget projections. These negotiations will help ensure that public safety will never be compromised. Our administration also will be focusing on connecting our communities. We are not just focused on downtown and City Dock. Our city is amazing because of neighborhoods like Parole, like Bloomsbury Square, President's Hill, Homewood, Admiral Heights, Newtown, Fair Winds, Hunt Meadows, and others. We are creating bike paths to connect our communities and move people throughout our city more efficiently and safely. We are holding meetings in our communities to learn firsthand what each community's priorities are and show them that our city is here to help them achieve their goals. An amazing example of our community pulling together residents, city officials, elected leaders, and others is Eastport Working Together. The program started after a tragic shooting in Eastport in September. The Annapolis Police Department and Bishop Craig Coats have done an excellent job of bringing community stakeholders together for an in-depth conversation about the future. A sewing club was started with many people donating sewing machines. More people than expected participated. A group of young kids have started both a line of clothing and a mentorship program. A nursing program is being started in partnership with HACCA and the city with the goal of enrolling residents in the nursing program at Anarundale Community College. Eastport Working Together has been an incredible, rewarding experience and will be a model for other communities in our city. I would like to commend Police Chief Baker and Sergeant Amy Miguel, Patty Norris, Lieutenant Kevin Kraus for their outstanding work with great community leaders and engaged Annapolis residents, and of course, HACCA Executive Director Beverly Wilborn. During my campaign, I challenged this city to work on building the trust of its communities. To this end, we have started a number of initiatives that do just that. The city has begun a Citizen Police Academy, and legislation is moving through the process to create the first-ever Police Advisory Board. The Citizens Police Academy gives Anapolitans a chance to experience some of the training police officers receive. And the Police Advisory Board will be a venue for residents to give guidance to the chief on important issues and be another conduit of communication back to the community. I also encourage graduating high school students from the city of Annapolis to apply for the Second Annual APD Scholarships. Three $1,000 scholarships were awarded last year. All of this hard work by the men and women of Annapolis Police Department has resulted in a significant decrease in crime. Overall, crime in the city of Annapolis is down 33% in 2018 compared to 2017 when you compare the first three months of each year. Violent crime is down 24%, and property crime is down 35%. Of significant note, burglaries are down 51%, and theft from autos is also down 57%. Sadly, the potential of gun violence still plagues not only our city, but our entire nation. But I believe that better community-focused policing, as well as community engagement, may finally be turning the tide on gun violence. Two weeks ago, our city had one of its largest crowds ever to gather at the State House for the March for Our Lives in Annapolis. The event was created, organized, and brilliantly planned by a team of teenagers led by Mackenzie Bowie, including Maddie Meyer, Kelsey Giorgio, and Maya Roglaski. These young leaders are here tonight in council chambers for a presentation following this speech, but I would like to ask these young women to stand up now and be recognized for your outstanding work and for restoring our faith in society. I hope this is just the beginning of these girls' public service, and I hope to see you running for office, because I know with more women in public office, we will reduce Your efforts and the efforts of young people across this nation are inspiring to us all. Please never stop marching, walking out, or protesting until change finally happens. I have complete faith you will succeed. I'm in awe of your courage and commitment to making our schools and communities stronger and safer for everyone. One of the best ways we can reduce violence and crime is by helping all members of our communities find a good job. While I am pleased to announce that the city's unemployment rate is now only 3%, a significant drop from the past few years, we still need to do better to help those who need a good, stable job. I would like to thank our Economic Development Director Hollis Minor and her colleague Hope Stewart, who have been partnering with multiple organizations, as well as our county and state resources, to offer assistance to those looking for employment, as well as businesses looking for employees. In the past four months, Hollis and Hope- In the past four months, Hollis and Hope, along with the support from multiple city departments, have helped 53 new brick and mortar businesses open their doors. This is a sign of a stronger economy, but also a lot of hard work by our city staff. We will continue to promote our economic centres of not only downtown, but also Westernapolis, Parole, SOFO, and others. Another top priority for my administration is coordination, not only between our city departments, but coordination between the city, county, state, and federal partners. We must do a better job of identifying and applying for millions of dollars in grant programmes. I'm pulling together a grant-writing ninja team to find, apply, and hopefully be awarded critical needed grant funding for this city. Another example of multi-jurisdictional partnerships to stop heroin... Another multi-jurisdictional partnership is to stop opioid and heroin epidemic that's plaguing our communities here in the city and across Maryland and our country. We must look at opioid addiction not as a moral failing, but as a disease. Under former Mayor Mike Panaliti's leadership, the city began an intense partnership with our county and state leaders to implement an emergency response to the epidemic. We will continue to serve on task forces and come together to find creative solutions to this problem. One excellent example of this multi-jurisdictional cooperation is the Bed Finder Project. I am incredibly proud of the work that our Office of Emergency Management is doing on this national award-winning programme. Deputy Chief Simmons, along with OEM's Mary Kate Hudson and our phenomenal GIS guru Shaun Wampler, and with the support from Barb Smith and her IT team, created this programme to bridge the gap in treatment time for individuals seeking assistance at our safe stations. They partnered with Anorundal County and treatment providers to make this happen. And in fact, this team will be recognised this summer in San Diego at a tech conference for their unprecedented efforts in using GIS technology. By the way, they beat out 100,000 other projects worldwide for this award. Let's give it up again for Kevin Emke, Shaun. Another example of multi-jurisdictional partnership was the effort to rid Whims Creek of derelict boats and solve some major safety issues happening in the creek. I am pleased to report that because of the leadership of County Councilman Chris Trombauer, working together with County Executive Steve Shue and state partners, we changed the jurisdiction of the waters of Whims Creek to the city's harbour master office. Because of this, our harbour master Beth Bayless was able to remove 13 derelict boats from the creek and make major public safety improvements. We will continue to support her efforts to make the waterways of the city safer and more enjoyable. In fact, working with the harbour master Bayless and our local environmental organisations, we will make our waterways swimable and fishable at all times again. As I mentioned earlier, many of these success stories are not because I am the new mayor, but because of years of dedication of city employees and community leaders. I am committed to supporting these employees in their everyday efforts to improve the services to our taxpayers. We're also working to restore confidence in our housing authority of the city of Annapolis. HACCA is no longer on the troubled HUD list. This is due to the leadership of Beverley Wilborn, her team at HACCA, its board and employees, and their dedication to the families we serve in public housing. HACCA is on track to be financially balanced and headed in a new direction under her new board leadership. At our next city council meeting, we will hopefully confirm two outstanding nominees for the HACCA board. Together with Beverley's leadership, we will begin the redevelopment very soon of Newtown 20 and other communities that desperately need reinvestment. One of the most important things we need to address tonight is the introduction of the fiscal 2019 budget. FY19 operating budget is the one that restores fiscal discipline to the city. A budget that doesn't rely on borrowed money, a budget that is responsible and demonstrates good governance. It addresses many of the weaknesses noted by the bond rating agencies in their most recent evaluation of our city's finances. Here's the bottom line: we need to get our house in order. This is not an easy political expedient decision to make, but kicking the can further down the road will not work anymore. Specifically, this budget eliminates the structural deficits. Fully funds our required public safety pension contributions for the first time in 10 years. Funds the 12 firefighters brought on board through the SAFER grant and includes money to upgrade fire apparatus. It also increases funding to reduce our $50 million liability for retiree health insurance. And appropriately uses pay-go funding, not borrowed money, for vehicle replacement, road maintenance, and sidewalk repair, just to name a few. I know if you realise, for years we have been borrowing $2 million a year to maintain our streets, adding to our debt plus paying interest fees. Pay-go funding for projects will reduce the city's debt burden and save interest costs over many years to come for city taxpayers. While I would like to avoid raising the tax rate, especially four months into office, it would be fiscally irresponsible for us to keep our structural deficits, our unfunded liabilities, and our infrastructure need for us to keep ignoring them. The time has come to deal with our fiscal reality that we have been handed, and this budget does just that. In the past, there was a lack of political will to make hard decisions. If we fail to make these decisions, we will have to ask ourselves questions like, which fire station goes unstaffed? Which communities suffer from increased response times from law enforcement and first responders? Or which streets continue to deteriorate? All you have to do is drive a few blocks from the city and you will know that our roads and sidewalks need some love. Drive by the firehouse on Taylor Avenue and you'll see a huge patch on the roof that has been leaking for a decade. Not too long ago, the city needed a line of credit to make payroll, and most purchases by the city were made on a cash-on-delivery system. This will be our future again if we do not act now. I would like to thank Bruce Miller and our finance team, who have worked hard to get us back on the right track. Tonight's budget will include an increase in the property tax rate to achieve these budgetary goals. The city can increase revenues only by expanding the tax base, raising property tax, or increasing fees. Unlike the county and the state, the city has limited revenue streams. This is the first time the city has raised its property tax rate since 2014, but every year our expenses have been going up. For about $1.50 a day per household, this tax rate increase will help put our city in a sound financial position. Budget deficits cannot be solved with just one solution. Over the coming months, we will also be digging deep to identify ways to expand our tax base and identify where we can cut costs. I know that getting our fiscal house in order also means taking a hard look at what we do and how we do it. This is the primary reason I have nominated Theresa Sutherland to be our new city manager. It is widely accepted that no one can scrub a budget better than Theresa. But more importantly, after 20 years of service as the county council's chief policy adviser, Ms. Sutherland brings an expertise that will allow us to evaluate what we should and should not be doing, how we can do business more effectively and efficiently, and how, within the structure of city government, we can move forward with a collective vision for the city of Annapolis. I know the city council members appreciate Theresa's expertise, and I have no doubt, under her guidance, we will improve fiscal responsibility. Thank you, Theresa, for joining us tonight, and I have faith that the city council will enthusiastically support your nomination during this evening's council meeting. I would like to thank everyone for indulging me in such a long speech. Not only do we have a lot of success stories to share, but also many challenges ahead for our city. I urge people who are here tonight, watching on television, online, or who will read about the state of the city in tomorrow's paper or on social media, if you care enough to listen to me speak for entirely too long, I urge you, if government and public policy is of any interest to you, please consider applying for many open positions on our city boards and commissions. These 24 boards and commissions play a vital and critical role in shaping our city government. We need your voice, expertise, and shared love for our town. We especially need women and people from diverse communities to apply, because our city will be stronger if it truly reflects the diversity of our population. I think that deserves a clap. We have a lot of exciting things happening in the coming weeks. The Yacht Club will move into its new old home at the Spark Creek Bridge, creating an opportunity to reimagine City Dock. Imagine instead of a 150-car tarmac parking lot that rolls stormwater right into Spark Creek. Imagine if we had a centrepiece park, maybe a few blades of grass for a picnic, maybe a spray park for kids to enjoy in the summer, or an ice rink in the winter, creating a community gathering spot for everyone in this city. Imagine in the empty space of the old Phillips Building, we had a beautiful boutique hotel in scale and in keeping with our historic architecture. The old Forces Building will soon be bustling, and hopefully, any day now, we will hear about the new tenant and another exciting waterfront dining attraction. The Summer Concert Series will begin. We will name a poet laureate for the city, and soon, we'll announce an amazing lineup for the Annapolis Rising Festival that celebrates our city's amazing music history. And finally, I would like to commend all of the city departments: fire, police, emergency management, Public Works, recreations and parks, as well as our partners at the Naval Academy, who came together to help pull off an incredibly busy winter season during our first four months. Our first ever inauguration parade and celebration, followed by the Military Bowl, the Martin Luther King Parade, the NHL hockey game, the largest St Patrick's Day parade ever, and a tremendously successful Annapolis Film Festival, the March For Our Lives, and others. Thousands of people descended on our city for these events, selling out hotel rooms and filling our restaurants, pubs, and locally-owned businesses, resulting in millions of dollars of economic activity. And we heard very little complaint about traffic and noise. In fact, we have received tonnes of positive feedback about these events and how they are not only bringing together communities, but showcasing our city. I greatly appreciate your patience and support, and I greatly appreciate the patience and support of these neighbourhoods that hosted these events. I thank you. And finally, how many times have I said finally? Because if this is a drinking game, you're... I promised my last thought. Our nation is in turmoil on a national level. A few months ago, I was in DC for the US Mayor's Conference. I realised after meeting mayors from across the country, Republicans, Democrats, independents, whatever, that when it comes to the most local level of government, nobody cares about what letter is behind your name on the ballot. The bottom line is, the trash needs to be collected and the streets need to be ploughed. Mayors have the unique opportunity to roll up their sleeves and work together to solve problems here at home, where people care about one another. Mayors and city councils can be the change agents. Thank you for listening. I look forward to working together to help Annapolis, Maryland's capital city, to be the best city in Maryland to call home. Thank you. All right, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
It's a tough act to follow, Mr. Mayor. The next item on the agenda is a ceremonial item. ID 87-18, March For Our Lives Annapolis Event, Presentation of Banner. But before we do that, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Second.
All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against? The ayes have it? Thanks. Thanks.
No discussion on that?
No discussion? Right, okay. Mackenzie, you guys are awesome.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
All right, good evening. My name is...
That is my friend Maya Rogowski, and that is Kelsey Giorgio. We organized March for Our Lives that occurred on Saturday, March 24th. The purpose of the event was to raise awareness about senseless gun violence with an emphasis on gun violence in schools. We are kindly asking that our legislators will consider some type of gun reform that can lessen these massacres. So, at the march, we had a rally, and that was amazing. It was just great for everyone to come together. Thank you, Mayor Buckley, for speaking. That was awesome. After the rally, we marched down to Susan Campbell Park, and we had all the participants of the march sign this banner, reading, "Dear elected officials, please protect our kids." Everyone there signed it. We had a ninety-three-year-old World War II veteran sign it. We even had very, very young kids sign it. We thought that was amazing, that it reached all these sorts of people. And we just wanted to present it to you today to let you know what we were doing.
Mr. Mayor, could you have them introduce themselves as to what schools, how they know one another, how they did this?
So, Kelsey and I are sophomores at the Severn School, and Maya is a senior at Northeast High School. We organized this about one week after the Parkland shooting, when all of the brave teens were speaking out for what they believed in, and we all thought, let's do this on a local level. Let's spread the word in Annapolis. And I contacted a group of peaceful activists, and within ten minutes, we had a Facebook page up and going, and people already interested.
Well, thank you. You're awesome.
Thank you so much.
We should hang it downstairs. Yeah, yeah. Could Chris Stew come up with the firefighters, too, please?
Good evening. I'm Chris Stew, President of Annapolis Professional Firefighters Association. I wanted to add a quick amendment to part of Mayor Buckley's speech about the fundraiser we had two weeks ago for Lieutenant Josh Schneider. We have an updated number today that the hockey game actually raised eleven thousand dollars for Lieutenant Schneider. I know you said that I was the one who put that together, but there was a little fallacy to that. I want to introduce the three members to my right. Firefighter Paramedic Dan Ward, firefighter Matt Benoli, and firefighter Patrick Gallagher were the three people who were very instrumental. They came to me with the idea, and the only thing I said was, yes, and what do you need? They were, they are part of the team. They are very instrumental in putting the whole thing together, and I think they actually deserve all of the credit for this amazing event. We hope that this event continues on an annual basis, and if it's not for one of our own members, we'll pick a charity each year and hopefully have this event for an ongoing charity. Mayor Buckley doesn't mind coming down and joining us. We actually got you a small token of our appreciation from the event.
The next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by committees.
All women, Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing and Human Welfare Committee will be having its next meeting on March 14th, 2018, at 5:30 PM. I'd like to thank the committee members. When I was out in absent, they have attended meetings in my absence and kept the committee moving forward. Older woman Tierney was instrumental in getting some questions to our Office of Law and also to our Ethics Committee as well, that's helping us move forward, your very formidable nominees for the Housing Authority Board. So, we look forward to taking that on and power up with the information from the Ethics Committee and the Office of Law as well. Thank you all for your efforts there. We will be on March 14th in the council chambers at 5:30 PM.
We're happy to have you back.
Thank you. The next meeting for Environmental Matters will be on April 18th at 3:00 PM, and one of the items on the agenda will be a presentation on the No Discharge Zone, the draft application. So, we'd like to invite anybody to come who may want to find out more about that.
Alderman, on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee will be receiving this very interesting budget that you gave us tonight, and we'll be meeting at least twice a week for the next several weeks, starting with this Wednesday and Friday, and a good time will be had by all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Audit Committee is still evolving, however, we are anxiously awaiting the passing of April the 17th this year so we can get to work and do what the statute and the ordinance has called upon us to do. We are anxious to get started, and I probably won't have any reports for us at our next meeting, but perhaps in early May, I will have something more substantive to report on. Thank you.
Alderman, finish it.
Yes, thank you. The Rules and City Government Committee will be meeting tomorrow, four o'clock here in council chambers, and will be taking up two pieces of legislation, O-1318 and R-918, City Emblems Prohibited Usage. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, Hanson.
May I just correct the record? The last meeting of the Housing and Human Welfare Committee was March 14th. The next meeting is Tuesday, April 17th at 7:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. What else? Okay. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
All right. Only one person lined up to speak, and he's my favorite person, Councilman Chris Trombauer.
Just going to tell you, it better be your wife.
Can you hear me now? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, is it in order to speak about the confirmation of the city attorney at this time?
Yes.
Thank you. It's great to be before the council. I don't come down here and bug you guys very often. The last time I was here, the council looked a little different, so welcome to all the new members, and I'm pleased to see the Beard Caucus is alive and well over here. I just wanted to speak briefly and tell you that tonight, you have the opportunity to hire the best of the best. And I know that you can go out and you can do a nationwide search, and you can hold a prolonged process, but I don't think that you're going to find someone better qualified and better equipped to help the city of Annapolis than Teresa Sutherland. Nobody that I know knows more about local government, how it works and how it doesn't work, than Teresa. She has a rap as being a finance person, and this is absolutely correct. And judging by the comments about the budget in your speech, Mr. Mayor, you're going to need her. But she has much more experience than that in terms of a management capacity, in terms of just knowing how to get things done. And I wanted to give you one anecdotal story from my time with her. I served about six years, I think, with her as the county auditor and myself as the county council member for the greater Annapolis District. And my very first budget, when I got elected, the county executive at the time was Mr. Leopold, and he had introduced a capital budget that moved Severna Park High School up and the Annapolis Elementary Schools down the list. And I came into Teresa's office, and I said, I want to fix this. And we worked together with several other council members and the Board of Ed and others in what seemed like many, many hours of deliberation in her office in the basement of the Arundel Center, and we came up with a plan. And I was very nervous about it because I was new, I wasn't sure exactly how things worked, and quite frankly, I didn't know if I had the political juice to pass our plan. But we did it in a very tight vote. It was very contentious. And what sustained me during that time, in my nervousness and my anxiety, was that Teresa would look over at me and say, everything's going to be okay. And she knew that everything was going to be okay because she had twenty-five years of experience in government, and she knew how things work. And regardless of how that vote went that night, I felt that things were going to be okay. Now, they worked out in our favor, and as a result, we have a few shining new elementary schools here in Annapolis, which I am eternally grateful for. But what I want to leave you with is the idea that you have a lot of work to do during this term, and Teresa Sutherland is the person that can help you achieve that. And each and every one of you will have the ability to work with her. She's the hardest-working person in town, the most knowledgeable person in town, and I think that working with each and every one of you, she will help make Annapolis a better city.
Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing no motion in the chamber, I declare comments by the general public closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is update from the mayor.
Okay, that was a short speech. Now, I'm going to give you the long speech. I think you've had enough updating, so... Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item on the agenda is an appointment, ID-88-18, Confirmation of City Manager Teresa Owen Sutherland.
Acting City Manager Stokes and Ms. Sutherland, would you please join us at the front table? And I'd like to thank Chief Stokes for the great job he's doing at City Manager.
Would you please confirm her so I can go back to the parking lot?
At this time, I would entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Teresa Owen Sutherland as City Manager. Second. Second discussion. Alderman, pay on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a relationship with the potential or putative city manager that goes back for fifty-plus years. Not that she goes back fifty years, of course, but her older brother and I were best buddies at St. Mary's Elementary School. I know her other brother quite well. I knew her dad. I am familiar with her work as a former Assistant State's Attorney for thirty-some-odd years. I think I did have some serious questions, however, about her being nominated for this particular position, not about her talents, not about what she brings to the city, but whether City Manager was the place to put those talents. I did review extensively the requirements for the office. I did so with the city attorney at one point, and I did quite a bit on my own, and I think that, well, I still have some questions. I think technically she may meet the definition or the requirements that we have. I think it's a close case. Having said that, though, I think that she is your choice. You have to work with her. I don't think necessarily that that's a terrible burden, by the way. I don't mean to make it sound like that, but hey, I'm ready to support her. I think that she'll do a fine job. I hope that, and I think she realizes well, that there's a whole lot more to this position than being an auditor, and supervising six or eight or ten people is a lot different from supervising some six hundred people. Got my fingers crossed, I certainly want her to succeed, and I, for one, even though I tend to cast a rather strict and at times jaundiced eye over some appointments that we have in important positions in the city, as I think we all should, I think that, I wish her luck, and I plan on supporting her. I think she'll do a good job.
Alderman, finish it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing Ms. Sutherland to us. I think I go back a little further because I worked with Ms. Sutherland's mother at Bates when I was teaching there in the early seventies, so, yeah, you know, so, but okay, it's all good. But my frame of reference to Ms. Sutherland personally is when I was president of the Teachers' Union, representing the livelihoods of five thousand teachers in Anaronda County, and knowing that there was somebody at the county with whom I could talk to and go to and get answers to the questions that I needed for my membership. And she was always there, no matter how flustered I might have been, she was there to give me the sound advice. And so, I recognize that she not only has the management skills, but she's got the financial skills that we need, and as a member of the Finance Committee, that we're going to desperately need to help us move our city forward. So, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for bringing her to us, and a hundred percent behind her nomination. Thank you.
Alderman, Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I don't have any personal experience with you. I just want to say a few words. I believe we're so fortunate to have her talents to focus and redirect our financial health. Watching our budget these last several years as Ward One Alderman and now as council, I've been frustrated to not see a real analysis of what works. All of our city staff work so hard, but we can do better, and that can be measured. And we need to measure our success by our departments. I don't think we've ever retooled to really deal with post-recession city demands as other cities have, and I think Ms. Sutherland is best equipped to manage this. Her transition report also instilled the need to cross interdepartmental barriers by saying each department needs to address climate change and resiliency issues. I was impressed by that out-of-the-box thinking, and I intend to vote yes for her appointment tonight. Thank you.
Alderman, Pendell-Chalice.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Ms. Sutherland, we haven't known each other very long, but I've read a lot about you in the newspapers. Years have gone by, being a local person and seeing all the work that you've done with the county, and we thank you so very much for the work that you've done for us. I have a story that I had shared with my colleagues that I had heard recently, when Ms. Owen was a third grader at Germantown Elementary... that I had heard recently, when Ms. Owen was a third grader at Germantown Elementary. She was given the awesome duty of being the person to collect the orders and the money from her fellow students, taking it to the cafeteria. And her third-grade teacher, I got it from her, who said that she never made an error and was right down to the penny. Every time. Dr. Harris passed that on. Every time, she never made an error. And I think as an eight-year-old, that definitely deserves applause, and I certainly vote for you. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of appointing Teresa Owen Sutherland as City Manager, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, can I say a few words?
Can you tell him no? Can I tell him no yet?
Many years ago, at a county council meeting, I referred to somebody as an old person. So tonight, I like to refer to her as a young person because now she could be my boss. So, are we square now? Are we good?
Ms. Finlayson, you also worked with my sister at South River. And it's a very small world when your third-grade teacher starts telling stories. Small town. Thank you all.
Do you swear and affirm?
As the case may be.
As the case may be.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of City Manager.
Execute the office of City Manager.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Charter and City Code of the City of Annapolis.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include journals of proceedings, CCM-031218, regular meeting minutes, CCM-031918, special meeting minutes, budget revision request, GT-17-18, transfer from law salaries, transfer to law/legal services, informational item, ID-94-18, retroactive payment of salary dating to FY 2017, first readers, 0-16-18, annual operating budget fiscal year 2018, referred to Financial Advisory Commission and the Finance Committee, O-17-18, capital budget fiscal year 2019, referred to Planning Commission, Financial Advisory Commission, and the Finance Committee, R-1318, capital improvement program fiscal years 2019 to 2024, referred to Planning Commission, Financial Advisory Commission, and the Finance Committee, R-14-18, position classification and pay plan, referred to Finance Committee and the Rules and City Government Committee, R-15-18, FY 2018 fees schedule effective July 1, 2017, referred to Financial Advisory Commission and the Finance Committee. And that is the end of the consent calendar items.
Move approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's on my first reader.
It's on my first reader.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Pion?
This is for first reader, correct?
It's for the consent calendar. Everything in the consent calendar.
There's nothing on second.
It says first readers.
Yeah, that's what they are. They're on first reader.
Okay.
Okay. Say, Alderman Pion?
Aye.
Alderman Pendell-Chris?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Henson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
We passed the budget.
Yeah.
The budget behind us. Are you kidding me? This is too easy. Hey, you can never be too careful.
That is a joke, actually. I thought I was going to get a lot of stuff done because no one would understand my accent. They'd just nod. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is public hearing continued, beginning with ordinance O-8-18, adequate public facilities, adequate school facilities standards for the purpose of amending the test for additional school capacity by requiring schools with enrollment greater than 95% of the state-rated capacity to be listed as closed on the annual school utilization chart and matters generally relating to adequate school facilities.
There is one speaker signed up. David Humphries, please come forward and state your name and address.
I know, because three of us were there, that the Education Commission took this up tonight, and they are going to come forward with questions and information. And I would ask that we would hold this open until the next city council meeting?
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, so we'll keep it open. No one else speaking? Okay. Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Anastasia Hopkinson. I'm with the Annapolis Neck Peninsula Federation. And I have sent you all a letter, which I will very quickly go over regarding adequacy of public facilities for schools. But first, I want to congratulate you on stealing from the county, Janice Hayes-Williams, and then Teresa Sutherland. It's a double hit. And you've done a great job doing that. You've got two excellent public servants. Regarding adequacy of public facilities, as you know, the county's had this for about 15 years on the peninsula. I simply want to state that the guiding principle in this legislation is quality of education. Though it has land use effects, it is primarily focused on protecting the educational quality of children. So I described the process for assigning students to schools in my letter to you, and I'm not going to review it now. But in it, though, I learned that the Board of Education in Annapolis and Anorond County, public schools are responsible for managing the schools and their capacity. And the process is deliberately, apparently, kept out of the political domain. So it's often said in city council, well, we have no power over schools and the school capacity. And that is accurate. You don't. Neither does county council. It's up to the Board of Education and the public schools. The power to influence those bodies rests with parents who have children in schools currently. So issues relating to decisions about schools are not primarily land use decisions. They have effects on land use, but they are focused on the quality of education, as should APF, Adequacy of Public Facilities, be. And there are a few other issues that have been brought up. Just to say quickly, there is a 95% threshold for a school to have no more capacity than 95%. That is a healthy slack or gives the county public schools the chance to manage schools, especially like in certain schools on the peninsula, where the local communities have a higher density than would have been planned for. More families and more students living per house than we had anticipated. And that 95% gives the public schools a chance to assign students to the schools closest to them. For carve-outs, carve-outs are hazardous. They sort of cut the school quality at its knees. You want to avoid them, but some of them are helpful. So if a carve-out, like for residences where there are no students that will be living there, over 55 of age residents are the kind that you would carve out for. But other than that, a carve-out for affordable housing, for instance, is quite challenging for schools because affordable housing has, by definition, young families who have lots of children, 1.4 children per average household. And that is what packs schools and drives them to overcapacity. So if you do a carve-out, you want it to have that standard. It does not contribute students to the local schools. Everything else I wrote down, so.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Anastasia, for your comments on carve-outs. That was a topic of two council meetings ago, and it was also a topic tonight at the Education Commission. And I think you're right. It's a very nuanced issue. At the Education Commission, they asked about whether a development got a carve-out and then decided to change the rules. How do we protect? On the other hand, one of the carve-outs that we're talking about is for workforce housing. And we talked about the desirability of having teachers be able to live in the same community as the students see the students at the grocery store and elsewhere. I know from my sister's experience, and also Alderman Finlayson, when the students see the teachers off-campus, it's usually they run up to give them a big hug and say hello. And I can't help but think that we would be better off with that kind of a community relationship. But you're absolutely right. We have to think about it very carefully. And so I do appreciate your comments.
Carve-outs, by nature, are unfair to everyone, especially when it results in a yield of more students to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would anybody else like to speak? I declare the public hearing.
Oh, sorry, I'm here. Janet Norman, Ward 7, 787 Annapolis Neck Road. I'm also a member of the Education Commission, representing Ward 7. And I know we talked tonight about providing you comments. And we thank Ms. Rondell Pendell-Chris and Mr. Arnett for coming to our meeting to explain things to us better. So I'm just speaking as an Annapolis High parent tonight, and I invite you all to come and volunteer in Annapolis High and see all the amazing things our students in every single program are doing. Because they need your mentoring, they need your job-training skills, they need all the help and guidance you can give them. We're going to be increasing from our 2,000-student level to 2,100 students next year, our principal just said. And if you've been in the school, you know how incredibly packed the hallways are. So with the change of classes, it's well-orchestrated chaos getting from one place to another with how crowded the classrooms are, how crowded the cafeteria was before we had a Panther Hour switch, which allowed students to eat in different locations. So there's a rule in fisheries management that you don't overstock a stream with trout because they're going to rip and tear at each other. And it's the same in high school with exhausted, hormonally-charged teenagers. You don't overpack them into a hallway, or they're going to bump and jostle, and, you know, things are going to happen that you don't want from overcrowding. We need to support our students. I support you in this ordinance. I believe we really need to pay attention to the population of Annapolis High. And having watched budgets for many years, the school system cannot respond quickly to enrollment increases. So please support this ordinance and do what we can. The developers or others might tell you that, well, it's the magnet programs that are increasing the population. As a magnet parent, you know, I know most of the kids, a lot of the kids in the program, we also send our Annapolis Cluster kids outside of our cluster to South River STEM, to the Broad Neck PVA program, to many other schools. So there's a net influx and outflux. But the vast majority of IB program kids are, you know, came from the Annapolis Cluster to begin with. So that's kind of a non-issue on the table, that number of students there. So I thank you for your efforts, and everything you can do for our students helps our city thrive and prosper. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I declare the public hearing on O-1818 open. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance O-1518, lease of city property, Truxton Park Wet Slip, for the purpose of authorizing a lease between the City of Annapolis and Mission BBQ or BBQ Management LLC for use of city-owned wet slip at Truxton Park, Annapolis, Maryland, for docking vessels and carrying on a business of barbecue restaurant services.
Okay. Two speakers are signed up. The first speaker is John Taylor. Please come up. State your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, all the women. My name is John Taylor. I live at 144 Spar Drive, and that's in Truxton Heights. So I don't know how many of you know that particular area, but it's a very quiet area. And many of us look out on Truxton Park, and there's also a condo building that is on the city side of Truxton Park that also overlooks the boat slip. I'm here to strongly oppose the lease as written. This is a residential area. It's zoned for residential use. It is not a commercial area, never has been, and never should be. It is not a commercial area, never has been, and never should be. The local, I've spoken to several dozen local residents. I've yet to find someone who is not violently opposed to this lease. The city did not consult with residents in the area before proposing this lease. As I mentioned, it's a residential area. A restaurant is an inappropriate use of public property in this area. Are we going to rezone this area now for commercial use? That would be the implication of this lease to me. I'm not a lawyer, but this is zoned R two and R three on the city zoning map, not commercial. The city has numerous regulations that control city, city property. The Truxton Park prohibits amplified music. I suspect that would go by the wayside very quickly. There's a daytime noise limit of sixty-five D B A and a nighttime after dusk limit of fifty-five D B A. I do not understand how this would be compatible with the operation of a restaurant business in that area. Truxton Park is already a magnet for crime and drug problems, as certainly the previous Ward one Alderman knew very well. There's major problems of property crime from people coming over the bridge from Truxton Park. Truxton Park is meant to be closed at night, but the city has refused to lock the gate leading to that bridge, and so there is a stream of people who are in the park after dark illegally, who then come into our community and commit crime. Also, we do not understand how there are adequate parking and toilet facilities for the operation of a restaurant business. There's very little facilities right there. The Truxton Park hours are limited to daylight hours. We do not understand how this is compatible with the operation of a restaurant business. Also, alcohol is prohibited in Truxton Park. Is the city gonna change the park rules to allow alcohol to accommodate this restaurant? Then there are many other issues that we consider. The lease stipulates no equipment, trash, et cetera, may be placed on the premises anytime. How can you possibly operate a restaurant business under those conditions? It does not make common sense. There are many better and far more appropriate locations for this business. I, as a voter, have, think it's an excellent idea to have a boat-operated restaurant, but not in a residential area. Thank you very much.
Mr. Taylor, I'm sure you have some questions. Alderman Finlayson?
Yes. Could I have some clarification? Is this zone residential, or is it zone commercial?
I think maybe Beth? I checked the city zoning map. It's R two, R three. It's right on the border between R two and R three.
Okay, but it's on the water, so how does, is it residential on the water? So it is R two, R three. It is not commercial. So where are we in our process if we're, we have legislation before us that goes against our own zoning laws?
In addition, I think this is analogous to a food truck, and that's only allowed in one ward, mine, so I think we're also running afoul of that.
Okay, well, I would ask the Law Department to help us weigh in on clarifying this, because I'm, I'm confused.
So, so Mr. Taylor, there's a lot of pushback on this, so we're investigating it right now. I know Alderman Tierney is planning on amendments?
Well, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My amendments basically clarify the use that couldn't make it to, they have to go through committee, the use being that it's basically, from my understanding, just docking, and it will not be actively cooking or being a restaurant. It's, and also from my discussions with Beth, it's purely to dock the boat, and maybe we should have Beth.
That's all I thought it was.
Yeah.
But it's, it's obviously causing concern, so I think we're gonna keep the hearing open. Is that right, Ross?
So moved.
Alderman Savage?
Yeah, I'd like to move to keep it open.
Okay.
I mean, if I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the very title area of the lease for docking vessels and carrying on a business of barbecue restaurant services, that is what is in the proposed lease, and that is what has us so concerned.
That's what he's testifying against, his lease in his hands. He's correct.
We hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Next speaker is Heidi.
Mr. Mayor?
Hello. I'm Heidi Rothenhouse, one nine eight Acton Road, Annapolis, Truxton Heights. So given Mr. Taylor's comments and your reaction, I can be very brief. I also share those concerns. I understand there will be amendments to the lease. I'm still very concerned about the idea of bringing commercial activities into the serene park setting. I think it's the wrong place for it. I will tell you, I love visiting harbors where people have floating restaurant services, where you can get coffee and muffins and, you know, even a barbecue sandwich in some other cities, but that operates in an area where there's already commercial activities, where there's sufficient resources for handling food trash and the rest of it. So I don't want to be an obstacle to that idea, because I think it could really be a nice enhancement to our harbor, but I don't think it belongs being stationed in a park. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else like to speak? Harbor Master Beth?
If it's helpful, I can clarify, and I, you know, for the record, it's largely immaterial to me if the lease passes or it does not. Mission Barbecue has been a great neighbor at City Dock, and the purpose of the lease, when they requested it, is for them. So if you're familiar with Truxton Park, you know that there are several floating docks. On the one floating dock where you may know we keep our Zodiac patrol boat, there isn't any foot traffic there, other than the Harbor Master staff. So the idea of this lease was simply for them to have one boat operator, possibly two boat operators, come to the park, jump on the boat, and disembark there. There was never any intention, nor is there any desire or agreement for them to run any business whatsoever out of Truxton, other than the fact that it could be considered a business because that is a commercial entity, Mission Barbecue. So I understand the concerns, and it sounds like the dialogue will go on, but if anyone has any other questions, there's really nothing else that that dock could be used for in terms of revenue, and there isn't any room for anything else.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you. So why is it that they need the city slip? I mean, why can't they run a slip like anybody else does?
They could. They could. It's an opportunity for the city to make a few thousand dollars per year in a space that would otherwise go unused, and from my experience, the employees are very law-abiding. We exchange information. It's another set of eyes, but if the people are opposed to it, it's really largely immaterial to me. Just wanted to make you understand how this came about in the first place. They wanted to dock up at City Dock. Obviously, that's grant encumbered. That cannot be used for them at City Dock, but I think maybe, maybe three or six times last year did they ever serve food off of that boat. It wasn't at any locations, to my knowledge, near or in the city, but the boat is just more or less a floating advertisement when it, when it disembarks.
And that's the source of a lot of the objections that I'm getting, is that it is advertisement, and it's advertisement at a city slip. There are other boats that have kinds of advertisements, usually maritime things on the boats, but having it in a very visible city slip, and I'm, I'm kind of surprised at the amount of email I'm getting expressing concern about this. If they want to rent a slip someplace, and that's a place for them to jump off, you know, that's fine, but I think there's, we're really gonna have to think long and hard about putting it in a city slip.
Sure.
Given the amount of pushback.
Alderman Tierney?
Yes, just as a, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just as a point of order, if you're continuing the public hearing, it's, they have in their hands a, an erroneous lease, and, and my amendment was to just make the lease state what the purpose was. So how does that get out before the next public hearing? I know Ashley Leonard, city attorney, has helped me with that, but, you know, I don't want them testifying against an erroneous lease unless it's a moot point.
Until the public hearing closes and it goes to the committee, and the committee amended, it's still not a final document to the council, and the amendments change the lease, you know, I mean.
Yeah, oh, I understand. I understand. It's just.
Okay.
You understand my concern.
Beth, sorry. What's the arrangement that they have at City Dock when the boat has been there over the?
They're not permitted. They used the City Dock space in the past. It came to my attention that we have a land use agreement, and I told them they were no longer allowed to use them, so you may have noticed, they haven't been at City Dock for quite some time.
Yeah. Alderman Arnett?
This is why we like our Harbor Master. She actually knows and forces the rules.
I try.
So we're gonna declare O dash fifteen eighteen still open for more public hearing. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The agenda has been completed.
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Henson?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to recognize, I was not here on the day that you all dedicated the plaque to the African-American Alderman, but I just wanted to thank you for being the kind of mayor that recognizes that achievement. I did get to view your comments, and you said that the people on that plaque have worked twice as hard to be where they are, to journey in this city from being considered property and not even a person, to then having our first elected official that was African-American in the entire state serve on the Annapolis City Council. To have my name as the most recent addition to that plaque is an honor, and it is a distinguished body of people. I may not be able to trace my lineage to eighteen seventy-three, but I am a part of a group of people who have stepped up to serve their city despite all the odds, and I thank you for being the kind of mayor that recognizes that. Thank you.
And let's hear it for our first woman city attorney. I mean, sorry, sorry, woman city manager, sorry.
I had no comment.
Anything else for good order?
In that tradition, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to be the first Alderman to move for adjournment tonight.
One more, Mr. Mayor, sorry, one more thing for the good of the order.
Alderman Rodriguez, sorry.
Since we're, we're here, and I know there'll be a more formal announcement coming forward, but I wanted to take advantage of, and thank you and your administration and Jane for, but we have, the new Hispanic liaison for the City of Annapolis has been hired and started last week, and it's Adriana Lee. Could you please stand up? So we're very excited and a lot of work to do, so thank you very much for, for serving our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Peon?
I'm trying to think if there's anybody here I can recognize. Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we adjourn.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Any discussion?
Adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
McGarvey's, here we come.